One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have the approval of the minutes from our December 20th, 2018 meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
Some would second.
If you all lose your favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Approval of the bills, Commissioner Postle.
Yeah, let's start with the accounts payable, which total 518,314 dollars and forty-five cents. Payroll account totals 437,356 dollars and forty-eight cents. There are five EFTs in our 911 account for 2,739 dollars and eighty-three cents. One check in the CDBG account for 1,449 dollars and sixty-three cents. There's one check in the CDBG home account for 10,975 dollars. Liquid fuels account has one check for 7,135 dollars and seventy-two cents. And finally, in the liquid fuels Act 89 account, there's one EFT totaling 102 dollars and fifty-four cents. Make a motion to pay bills.
Thank you. Second?
Second?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Bills are approved. Treasuries report, Treasury Stevens.
Our starting balance was 352,608 dollars and nine cents. We had deposits of 330,242 dollars and nineteen cents. We transferred 500,000 from the Capital Reserve. We had a transfer from LAPC for 1,057 dollars and sixty-five cents. We had void checks for 1,056 dollars and two cents. We agree with the reading of the bills by Commissioner Postle, leaving us a remaining balance of 230,293 dollars and two cents. Our local fuels account has 304,800 dollars and thirty cents. Our liquid fuels Act 89 has 264,444 dollars and six cents. Our 911 account has 2,709,979 dollars and twenty-six cents. Our LAPC has 15,715,222 cents. Our local fuels Act has 192,749 dollars and 51 cents. Capital Reserve has 3,590,947 dollars and 12 cents. Our certificate of deposit has 3,589 dollars and 22 cents, and it's all subject to audit.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Deb? Motion to approve.
Some would second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Treasury reports approved. Meetings and events. Commissioner Dunkel.
Okay, with the holidays over the last two weeks, there has not been quite as much activity as normal. Yesterday, we attended prison board meeting, and we also had a salary board meeting. And that concludes my meeting report, but I do reserve the right to speak a little later on another topic. Thank you.
Okay.
We had a Board of Elections meeting. We had a Salary Board meeting. We met with our tech to explore the reuse of certain county assets. We met with PennDOT on the temporary easement for PennDOT project that's later on in your agenda. I attended the Mifflin County Planning Commission meeting, JBBDS Executive Committee meeting. We had a prison board meeting, as Commissioner Dunkel commented. And on New Year's Day, I attended the swearing-in ceremony for our representatives, Urban Benninghoff and Hershey, and Senator Cornman in Harrisburg.
All right.
Which was like the first day at school.
All right, thank you. I had the Board of Elections, Salary Board. We met with Gary Brown of PennDOT and also the prison board. Public comment today. Mr. Swager.
Good morning. First off, I'd like to apologize for not seeing this early enough for the agenda, but it did just come available, and I think it's pertinent information that the public should be aware of. With the 2019 election season now upon us, I wanted to make the public aware that the Penn State Extension Office will be having a "Toss Your Hat in the Ring" seminar that's going to be for individuals that ever thought about running for local office to attend. It's going to be an informational session where they're going to have a guest speaker coming in, and also at the end of the night, going to have a group of panelists. I as well will be one of the panelists there to answer any questions and talk about the local election process. The date for this in Lewestown is going to be January 28th, and that's going to be down at the Penn State Extension Office on East Market Street. And again, it's going to be a lot of information. More information is available on the Extension's website, which I will give to the press here. So while they're making their report, they could throw that in there. Also, on the election website, we have, we as the Board of Elections have posted the countywide offices that will be up for election in 2019. Just to briefly go over these, it'll be county auditors, county commissioners, county coroner, district attorney, and pro bono attorney, and clerk of the courts. Also, Mifflin County School Board will have five school board representatives that will be up for election. I'm working with the municipalities to get a list of, list of local offices, township supervisors, et cetera. And we will be updating this list as they become available to us. We ask that the municipalities report to us by February 19th, which begins the first day of circulation of petitions. The election office is always available. If anybody has questions on documentation required, eligibility for running for office, feel free to call the office or stop by first floor of the courthouse.
All right, thank you very much. Jay?
One last thing saying happy birthday.
Thank you.
I have a question. When they're tossing your hat, registration fee, it didn't say anything in the flyer.
Right. The Penn State Extension Office does have a registration fee, which covers their cost for marketing efforts, having people come in to speak as guest speakers and whatnot. But that's all through the Penn State Extension.
I believe it's 25 dollars. Is that correct, Jay?
Yes.
What, Deb? Any more questions for Deb? All right, Commissioner Dunkel, we have a comment. You want to reach here?
Do you want me to go now?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Okay. Last year, the Mifflin County Library asked the county commissioners to adopt a proclamation to celebrate the 175th anniversary of the library. It was our honor to recognize this important milestone in the library's history. During my remarks, I lauded the work of the library for its work and its service. However, I was also critical of the library for the methods employed by the library when the branch libraries in Milroy, McVaytown, and Allensville were closed. Today, and at each commissioner meeting within the near future, I intend to focus upon the tactics the library used when closing the branch libraries, and again, reiterate my call for Molly Kinney and members of the present or former Library Board of Directors to publicly acknowledge their failure to meet the standard expected for governmental and quasi-governmental organizations. Let me state from the beginning that I stand by the information I am presenting, and I am very willing to debate Molly Kinney or any other board members, current or past, about the library's failure to be transparent and open in the closure process. I will be using a flip chart to help illustrate my concerns. When Molly Kinney and the Mifflin County Library Board of Directors made the decision to close the libraries, they went to the individual branch sites and taped a note on the front door indicating that the library was closed until further notice. Now, I'm going to use this flip chart here, and I'm going to ask that the cameras hold in on this because some of us are visual learners rather than audio. This is, in essence, what the Mifflin County Library did. They posted a note. They taped a notice onto the doors of the branch libraries saying, "This library is closed until further notice." One might expect to see this type of notice on the door of a massage parlor or tattoo parlor that has closed. One might expect to see this on the door of a small business that has closed. But for a library that gets nearly one quarter of a million dollars every year from county government, it's rather unacceptable. In my opinion, it was a rather crass and underhanded way to make the closures. The library chose to ignore all local officials, all municipal officials, elected officials from the municipalities that they closed the libraries in. And it was these very officials that partnered with the library for decades. Is this the way you treat a friend? Is this the way you treat a partner? The library board knew, and Molly Kinney knew, when they posted the signs on the doors, that they were deceptive. The sign, as it read, implied that this could be a temporary closing, perhaps due to some plumbing issue, remodeling, painting, or whatever. In fact, they knew when they posted this that those libraries would never be open again as a branch library in the Mifflin County library system. Now, let's take a look at the second chart I have. Which libraries are we talking about? We're talking about the Milroy branch. Fifty-three years, Milroy was a branch library in this county. Fifty-three years. McVaytown, 51 years. Allensville, 34 years. If you add these up, you've got a total of 138 years that these branches partnered with the library to provide educational, recreational, and other needs in the local communities. And the municipalities, in doing that for 138 years, were long-term partners of the library. Last year, as I indicated earlier, the county library system asked us to have a resolution in honor of 175 years of the Mifflin County Library. Excellent, we did it. Here, you have municipalities giving the county library system 138 years collectively. And they didn't even have the courtesy to notify the local elected officials, the people that you and I and everybody elect, that they were going to close them. Now, how? How did these municipalities partner with the Mifflin County Library? Number one, they provided housing at no cost. In other words, each of those municipalities provided a site and never charged the library one single penny for rent. Number two, the municipalities paid the utilities. They paid the electric, the heating, the water, the sewage. And further, the municipalities provided custodial services, the cleaning, the maintenance, snow removal. Again, 138 years. Now, think about this. These municipalities freely gave the space and paid the bills associated with those branch libraries as it relates to the utilities and custodial services. Think of the investment those municipalities made on behalf of the library. If you add up 138 years, it would run into the hundreds of thousands of dollars of in-kind services that these municipalities provided the library, and yet, the library didn't even have the courtesy to notify those officials that they were going to close the branches. That, to me, is incomprehensible and just plain wrong. There is, in life, a right way to do things and a wrong way to do things. This clearly was not the right way to do it. Who supported the branch libraries? The local officials. The mayor and the council in McVaytown, township supervisors of Oliver, Menno, and Armah Townships. And local officials are elected. Library board members are appointed. Library board members answer to nobody but themselves. Elected officials, on the other hand, must be cognizant of public opinion and the sentiment within their communities. So when the library board and Molly Kinney decided that they were going to close the libraries, they should have done it properly. You know, sometimes in life, decisions are very difficult. And we don't relish having to make decisions in difficult situations. But there's a right way and there's a wrong way. Now, when you speak to Molly Kinney about this situation, her response is simple. "I didn't have a vote. I can't vote. I'm not on the library board. I may be the director, but I didn't have a vote." Yes, that's correct. She didn't have a vote. But she, of all people, a woman who has a PhD, should have been the moral compass, the moral compass for that board. If the board wanted to close the branch libraries, that was their prerogative. They had that right, and they did it. But they did it the wrong way. And that, to me, is unacceptable. And so, having said that, I have a couple of questions for my colleagues. Kevin, as chairman of the board and as county commissioner for seven years now, is this the way that you would do business if we have a situation here in the county? Would you just simply go to that particular entity and post a notice on the door? Or would you do something different?
No, I would take a different path.
And why would you take a different path?
Just for the disclosure, awareness. You know, I think the library board, I think the current library board in the past would knows that they should have done things in a different manner. I know what they were faced with financially. They had a downwind fund that had been drained. And financially, just four or five libraries, they didn't feel they could do it. But however, the method they used in getting there, you know, was not fair to everyone involved. They should have had a couple of meetings, maybe in the municipalities themselves in the evenings. But the path they chose wasn't the right one. But I think the decision they made, they were forced to make in this circumstance.
A brief comment and reaction to that. There are two different issues here. There's the issue of closing the branches, and then there's the issue of the process used to close the branches. I'm not discussing the former. I'm discussing the latter. The way the Mifflin County Library Board of Directors, which receives a quarter of a million dollars from this county each and every year, why they chose to take the low-winding path that was not transparent, that was not fair, and particularly slammed the door in the face of the local municipal officials. A right way, a wrong way. Rob, you're going to be running for reelection this year, I assume, and you'll probably be doing some door-to-door and going to events throughout the county. We'll probably be in the McVaytown area, Allensville area. When you knock on a door and somebody said, you know, what the county did, what the county library system did, was within their prerogative. But the way, the way in which they did it was wrong. And all that Steve Dunkel has been asking for over the last couple of years is a public acknowledgement by the library that, yeah, we screwed up. We did do things wrong. We should have been more transparent. We should have notified the elected officials. So if somebody mentions this to you as you're going door-to-door or in a public forum, what's your response going to be?
My response, Commissioner, is that you are correct. I don't disagree.
So why is it that the Mifflin County Library Board and Molly Kinney are so hesitant to offer an apology and acknowledgement to the people affected by this decision?
You're asking me why they're making that decision? I don't know.
Well, I thought you said you spoke to them, and they told you they would not do it.
They said they wouldn't do it. Why they're not doing it, I don't know. I can't get in their heads, Commissioner. I agree with you. I don't disagree.
You didn't follow up, though, as to what their objections were in making an apology?
Objections were it was a different board.
Well, you know, the library is an institution, and the business of the library transcends boards. Boards come and go. Commissioners come and go. And the reality is that any quasi-governmental entity like the library has a responsibility, especially since it receives all the tax dollars that it does, to be transparent, be fair, and do things above board. And so, I am here today to begin to reiterate this process. Each and every meeting over the next several months, or until the Mifflin County Library Board of Directors and Molly Kinney make the decision to do what they need to do, I will continue to highlight and examine other components of the way they did the job. And this is just step one.
Commissioner, I think I'm going to invite the library officials to a meeting and see if they want to address the points rather than guessing. We'll ask them to provide some answers.
Well, I'd be very happy to participate in it, and I'd be very happy to debate them because how do you defend this? How do you defend this? The only logic that I can come up with is that they knew that the local communities would be opposed to the closure of the branches. And so, they operated on this route to try to keep from getting a black eye. The problem is, the problem, the issue hasn't gone away. It's still there. It was an injustice then, and it's an injustice today. So I'll be happy to meet with them, but I can assure you that I will use the form I have as a county commissioner each and every meeting for the next several months to look at the various components that prove that the library board was not transparent and forthright in the way they closed the branch libraries.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to new business now. We have item A, request for exoneration of 2018 county fortunes for capital taxes. The Allen Borough Tax Collector, Melody Kane, has won. Do I have a motion to approve this?
Some would.
Second?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Item B, amending the action taken on December 6, 2018 to exonerate Brown Township Tax Collector Cheryl Hartzler for collecting the 2018 per capita taxes that were last presented. At the time, we approved 98 exonerations. The corrected total is now 96. So motion to amend that action.
Some would.
Second?
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion is approved. Item C, Resolution Number One of 2019 on behalf of Brown Township Supervisors approving budget revisions to the fiscal years 2015, 2016 CDBG programs. Jim?
Good morning and Happy New Year. This is a correction to a previously adopted resolution, which was Resolution 17 of 2018, adopted on December 5, 2018. The wrong resolution just got back to Kathy, so we corrected the resolution, which had the correct figures. This is an amendment to the 2015 and 2016 Mifflin County on behalf of Brown Township budget years. So the only difference is if you go down to the last whereas, number two, the decrease of the Bender Park Handicapped Fishing Pier is in the amount of $917.85 versus what was previously adopted, which was $1,402.85. So the figure that's accurate is the $917.85, which subsequently impacts the single-family housing rehabilitation program. And the budget for that will then be $53,297.85. All remaining items are intact and remain the same.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Question? Motion to approve Resolution Number One.
Some would.
Second?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Item D, change order number one for the street reconstruction of South Wayne and Spring Street project due to a decrease in cost of $18,311.37. Mr. Hartz?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners. This is a project that was completed previously. It was bid this summer and under contract by Jay Volker and Sons. It is, it was for repaving on South Wayne Street, a portion of South Wayne Street, and Spring Street within the borough of Lewestown using the borough of CDBG monies. The original contract amount was 163,361.64, and the change order amount is 145,050.27, a decrease of $18,313.7. A major portion of that change, we always have a change order at the end of the job because we've been, when we do a paving job, we bid it per ton and per lineal foot of milling and that type of thing. And then we do a change order again to address the, adjust the quantities based on what was actually used. So we're not paying for more, paying for less than we actually used. But a major portion of that was, the borough's street superintendent had requested that we not pave a cross street on, at, on South Wayne Street due to potential water problems. And whenever they pave the cross street, then they will pave this portion. So basically, there was an intersection that was not completed, and that's a major portion for the reduction of the funding. This fund, these funds will be moved to another project at some point in the future through a budget revision and stuff. Any questions?
I'm sorry, Doug. Maybe you said it, but what's the year? What year is, are these funds?
For South Wayne Street, it is 15 and 16. And for Spring Street, it is 2016 and 2017. So what this will expand is all of our 15 funds, all of our 16 funds, and a portion of the 17 funds for Lewestown Borough's portion of their CDBG contract there. The revision would take place in the 2017 year then, so therefore expanding the previous year's funding.
All right. Motion to approve change order.
Some would.
Second?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
with Pendot for construction purposes on State Route 1005, parcel number 222. Mr. Postle, you are in.
Thank you. We had a meeting with the Pendot representatives regarding this project, and Pendot is updating and changing its traffic signals in Lewistown. Last month, we took action on the signal that is at Courthouse, that would be Third Street and Wayne. This one pertains to the signal on Dorcas and Market, I believe. It's addressed to the Redevelopment Authority because in the research of the deeds, Pendot had found that the Redevelopment Authority is still listed as the owner of a very small portion. This is probably about 200 square feet, which is like 10 by 20. And it's a temporary easement. They just needed to put some equipment on it while the signal is being replaced. The offer is $500, which is fair and was what the county had been offered for other projects on Third and Wayne. So the letter is in front of us to approve on behalf of the Redevelopment Authority, since the Redevelopment Authority has no members, make a motion to approve the temporary easement with Pendot for the construction purposes.
Okay, thank you. I would second.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Item F, subrecipient agreement with the Mifflin County Commissioners in the Borough of Juniata Terrace for road reconstruction costs and portions of Hudson Avenue, Viaduct Way, and Wagner Avenue project using 2016, 2017 CDBG funds. Mr. O'Gee, reflect.
Yes, F and G are two subrecipient agreements, which are the contractual obligations we, the county, the grantee of these funds have with the subrecipients. And in the F item, the subrecipient is the Borough of Juniata Terrace, which includes roadway reconstruction of Hudson and Viaduct Way and Wagner Avenue. Hudson and Viaduct Way, there's approximately 6,951 square feet of road surface on Hudson Avenue and approximately 5,129 square feet of road surface on Viaduct Way. It does not include any type of milling, as far as I understand. Is that correct, Doug?
Just paving notches, which would be at the end of the roadways or street crossings if they own milling in the thickways, not actual complete milling of the streets.
The borough has donated liquid fuels funds in the amount of $3,487 towards this project. The CDBG funds are a total of $15,088, which is a total project cost of $18,575. The second roadway is Wagner Avenue, was in the borough, and it includes the same road reconstruction work of approximately 21,897 square feet, and begins at Henderson Way along the westerly direction along Wagner Avenue to the termination of Wagner Avenue. Those costs include 2017 funds, the prior roadway work I explained were 2016 funds. For the Wagner Avenue project, CDBG funds in the amount of $67,500 and $5,265. Also, the Juniata Terrace Borough are including liquid fuels for engineering design in the amount of $7,000, for a total project cost of $79,765 for that road. So both projects total $98,340, and the agreement outlines what needs to be done on behalf of each party. And the next step would be completion of the environmental review, which is currently underway. Move on to G, it's the same subrecipient agreement, but for a different project in Armah Township. And that project involves the installation of six ADA ramps with truncated domes along, around the municipal building there at 283 Broad Street in Milroy. It includes widening the existing sidewalks, and it's a handicap accessibility project for that municipal building. The engineering will be paid from the township supervisors in the amount of $5,000, and the CDBG portion out of 17 money is $28,000, with a total budget cost of $33,000. I did send both agreements to Solicitor Snook, and I assume everything is okay, and that's why they're on the agenda. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Jim, I understand the Armah Township because it's ADA, but the Juniata Terrace road reconstruction, is that because the neighborhood is eligible?
The whole borough is eligible because it's above 51% low moderate income.
All right.
So by default.
All right, and then questions for Jim. If not, I will entertain a motion that approves both subrecipient agreements outlined as we have.
Sumo.
Second.
All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Thank you, Jim. Item H, purchase of service agreements for use if needed by children and youth, Summit Early Learning, Lewistown, Adelfoy Village, Latrobe, Community Specialist Corporation, Pittsburgh, Denver Treatment Alternative Centers, Lewisburg, Families United Network, Muncie. Hannah?
So they are all renewals, except for Community Specialist Corporation, which is a child adolescent mental health clinic. Summit Early Learning is in our needs base. It simply is a name change. They were formerly S U M D. They provide our head start in early education in Mifflin County. Adelfoy Village provides foster services, and they also license a lot of our foster homes. Diversified Treatment Alternative Centers located in Lewisburg, they provide RTF services for us for at-risk adolescent males, particularly focusing on physical and sexual abuse. And Family United's network, known as FUN, also provides our foster care services.
Hannah Beck, Summit Early Learning, you said that's a name change?
It is a name change.
What was the name for it?
Sum, S U M D.
Okay.
Yeah, in looking at these, some of them are at some distance. For example, Pittsburgh, Muncie, Latrobe. What percent, and I'm just looking for a ballpark estimate here, what percent of special needs that youth have can be addressed locally versus those that have to be sent to facilities that are at a greater distance?
So most of the Latrobe, as well as Muncie, they're their headquarters, but they actually have a site in Mifflin County. So both Adelfoy Village and Muncie have offices here. The Diversified Treatment Alternatives, most of the RTFs, which are facilities where our children or adolescents stay and have 24-hour care, we don't have a lot of resources in Mifflin County, so those are usually the ones that we outsource to. For example, the Pittsburgh site, the Community Specialist Corporation, we have a young man that's in a residential treatment center in Cannonsburg, and he receives his mental health treatment through this mental health clinic near his RTF.
All right. Motion to approve the purchase of service agreements freeze.
Sumo.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Item I, personnel. We have resignation of children and youth caseworker Catherine Ray effective December 21, 2018, and the hiring of Pamela Britton for part-time corrections officer effective January 7, 2019, promotion of Cassandra Price from caseworker 1 to caseworker 2 effective January 7, 2019, and employment of Bryce Ward for intern in the children and youth department effective January 7, 2019. Do I have a motion to approve the question of ours?
Sumo.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Can I ask, Ms. Dan? How long will the intern be with us?
Until April 28.
All right, I'd like to thank Max Ober and Stephen Gibbs, who's from MCTV, for being here today and making it available for our county residents to view. That concludes our agenda. We stand adjourned.